And then kinda like summer, they got the plan to flip it. I mean, we're behind there, so.
Right.
Smart move.
So, um.
I would say ninety percent.
Yeah. Yeah. Well.
We never get any guys.
John, we're putting your name on play.
President. Guy that used to be on the Madonna.
John, you lost, right?
And my wife is with him. And then.
God, he really did.
My wife.
I know. Not the most fun. Yeah, so it was really kind of, it was a neat. It was a neat thing. I was just astounded that I even saw it. But I think that they're trying to do a lot of work for the Palm World in terms of, um. He was.
Yeah, you know that there's some people don't think there should be a drive sort of.
Yes, I know.
I'll call the Village Board of Trustees, 2019 Budget Workshop to order on Monday, October twenty ninth, twenty eighteen. We have a forum and the agenda was properly posted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can sit down now, John.
Yeah. John, you were giving, getting feedback to all of us and we all got off, off track.
Yeah, we forgot.
Was John kneeling during that?
All right, public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. I don't think we have anything. All right, item five is presentations to the board and we have a presentation by Associated Appraisal Consulting.
No, we're doing the other stuff first.
Okay.
They're not gonna be.
All right, we'll move on to six A. New business, discuss and consider approval of developer agreement with Punzarella LLC doing business as Oakstone Recreation Facility. He's passing out the latest iteration.
Is this the one that was in the?
It's the same one. Well, essentially it is, but there were a few minor, um, grammatical changes. What was in your, or our policy or procedure has been that after the board has reviewed and approved and offered a purchase and we move towards scheduling a closing, then we adopt this, uh, this resolution that's kinda sets forth the transaction. It's a, there's a power of, power of attorney for Matt and the reason that we, I attend the closings if, if Matt wants me to. But that way then there's kind of a, um, a check on each other so that we're not going to Hawaii. Oh, sorry. Um, that we're not taking a trip on, on proceeds. Then, uh, this is tentatively closed, tentatively scheduled to be closed on Friday morning. So the first two documents are pretty straightforward and the developer agreement is almost exactly, um, like the one for Jimmy John's in the sense that, uh, they are not asking for any TIF, they're not receiving any TIF. But they, their building needs to be built and it, it needs to have a value of one million, five hundred thousand honor before January first, twenty twenty. And if they're, if they have, um, a value of one million, five hundred thousand honor before January first, twenty twenty, then number one, the village, uh, no longer has a right to buy back the property. That's something that's in the restrictive covenants of the, um, Commerce Department and the developer will not be responsible for any development guarantee payments. So, um, I included or sent you not just the, um, those documents, but also the documents that, uh, we had compiled which, um, shows you the offer to purchase. All, and there was an offer to purchase, there was a counter offer. Uh, I also included the, um, title work. And then, uh, a summary of the various, their appearances in front of the village is in Aaron's, um, kind of after action memo that, uh, was in there. So, right now, and the reason that we put this on tonight is because, uh, Punzarella decided that they needed to close or wanted to close earlier rather than later in the month. And so to accommodate that, um, this meeting was, had been already scheduled and I asked if we could put this on here and so that's why.
Any questions on the developer agreement?
I'd like to approve the developer agreement with Punzarella. Oh, I see that.
Yep.
Oakstone Recreation Facility.
And, and Troy, could you also include in your, um, motion, um, the approval of the power of attorney and also the resolution?
I include both those, uh, the approval of the power of attorney and the, um, the resolu- yeah.
Is the power of attorney, the, um, is the April second date correct on there? For the completion of the transaction by the village board?
No. Uh, so we'll change that. That should've had tonight's, um. It is possible that this has been used before. So, yes, thank you for catching that.
All right, um, you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the development agreement between Punzarella LLC, EBA Oakstone, and the resolution as well with the changes that we have discussed here. So that we're looking at the hard copy that we're approving. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, motion passes. So that you takes care of six P then as well.
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on, six C. Discuss and consider twenty nineteen preliminary budget as recommended by the Finance and Personnel Committee and select public hearing date for adoption of the twenty nineteen budget. I think Matt hand-delivered everybody a hard copy and the latest memos were in there. So I'll let Matt take it from there.
Okay. Um, I'll just do a, a quick overview, um, then we'll, Deb will go over the revenues and then, uh, we'll review the staff memos that were in the packet. And feel free to ask questions, you know, throughout, um, as well at the end. The goal by the end of the night is to have, uh, approval from the board to publish a preliminary budget and set a public hearing date. Uh, we're suggesting November nineteenth for that. The purpose of that is kinda twofold. We, um, well, for one, it meets the fifteen day notice period that we need to provide and we'll, you know, have it on the website and at Village Hall, but it also gives the board, if you would need it, an additional meeting. The first meeting in December would be the last time to approve it. So you could technically review the budget, including this meeting, uh, three more times. And, uh, prior to that final motion tonight to approve publishing the preliminary budget, there could be any number of motions from the board to cut something, to add something. So there, there could be a whole bunch of different motions if you so choose under this item. So with that, just kind of the cover memo that I had in the packet, uh, our current village tax levy about three point seven million dollars. Uh, the state allows us, um, would allow us to increase the tax levy up to above four point four million. Uh, the village's financial management plan, uh, approved, had approval in there for a two hundred sixty, two thousand dollar increase, which is about seven percent. Um, that'd be about three point nine six million. Uh, the impact to taxes on the financial management plans, uh, planned increase is about forty dollars on the tax bill. Um, following that, the, uh, department heads and committees look at their individual budgets and then submit them to Deb and myself. Um, after we compiled all of those, and this is always a much higher figure, um, that was a five hundred twenty-four thousand dollar increase, which is, uh, two hundred sixty-two thousand over the financial management plan approved levy. Um, so obviously that's much more than, you know, the board would be looking for. So from, from that point, then I, I go through it and try to get it to, uh, at least be the amount that was approved in the financial management plan. So that would be the twenty nineteen administrator recommended tax levy, which is, uh, three hundred forty-three dollars less than the, uh, planned amount, which is right around the forty dollar increase that was discussed. Following that, we met with the finance committee, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. And they took a look at it. We'll, we'll be discussing these, but just a, a couple of changes and that lowered, lowered the levy an additional nineteen thousand. So we're, we're looking at, you know, the, they're still, you know, probably thirty, forty dollar range as far as impact on the tax bill. We did receive today our assessed value figures, so we'll have some updates coming up as far as, you know, the impact on the tax bill. It came in at eighty-nine point four percent of, uh, the, the ratio from assessed value to equalized value. So that, that'll be discussed more later. Uh, page two of the memo gives just a, a, a listing of the significant projects and proposals that are in the budget. And again, those will be going, gone over individually, um, coming up. Any, any questions on any of that so far? So I guess with that, Deb has been looking through kind of the high level revenues.
Sure.
Overall, um, there's only really a few line items that had any significant difference over last year's budget in the revenue area. The first one being in intergovernmental aid, the, uh, transportation, state aid transportation jumped up, um, forty-six thousand, um, from three twenty-four to three seventy. And then in the next section, the licenses and permits, um, building permits I have increased over last year. However, if you remember, building permits are kind of an in and out. The revenue's increased, but the expense also increased. So it doesn't really affect the bottom line. Finances and forfeitures, um, is the next section. Um, I increased the village share to twenty thousand up from fourteen thousand just based on runs, kind of run rates of the last couple of years. And then the next one of interest is all the way down in the miscellaneous section. You'll see the payment per school resource officer. So, um, if you remember, we have a contract with the, the North Grove School District for a school resource officer at Glacial Drummond. The school has, is pays back the village seventy-five percent of the cost of that officer. So the rest of the year, we pay the officer as normal and that goes into the lease budget as every other officer does. And then at the end of the school year, we invoice the school and they pay us that amount. So that's what this payment for school resource officer line is ordered. And then I don't know if Sean wants to touch on maybe the recreation revenue line items or not?
Um, there wasn't really anything significant in there. We did, uh, go a little bit higher on our adult and senior fitness, uh, because things are going really well there. Um, other than that, I don't think there was a whole lot. Kinda stayed pretty much where we were, gentle increases.
Um, also just a step back too, it'd probably be worthwhile to, um, show how the budget has changed from the specifics from the Finance Personnel Committee as well as a couple of the, um, kind of benefit line items. Little more minor updates that, uh, has come in, uh, to Deb since the last meeting. Um, Deb had a memo like that in her packet that kind of outlined how that went out and she can go through that.
Sure. So as, um, the memo shows, the levy for the Finance and Personnel meeting was three point nine six zero. There was some, an increase of two thousand six hundred sixty-one due to some court, the court budget came in and, um, was a little higher than I had anticipated. So that, just for that one, dental premiums came in and they actually came lower than what I anticipated. So that saved us one thousand six hundred and eighteen. Um, per the, the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, um, Glenn Hall contribution was removed, so that was twenty-two hundred. Also per the meeting, we removed the parks FTE that was in there. Um, it was in at one full-time parks supervisor position. So that was taken out, but this, the recommendation was to replace that or merge the two positions somehow between Public Works and Parks. And that's more of a, um, at the foreman level for Public Works and that's in for half a year. Um, per the committee vote, it was also, um, recommended to remove the revaluation. However, the revaluation was put in as a, as cap, being paid for with cash reserves. So that does not have an effect on the levy itself. So the total changes from the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting to now, or to the budget that you have in front of you, was, uh, a decrease of eighteen thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars in expenses, leaving the new levy at three point nine four two.
Any questions for Deb?
That really, it's more of a question for the trustees that run the Finance and Personnel Committee. Um, what was the reasoning behind the removal of Flint Hall contribution?
We don't use it much.
We don't use it at all. I mean, the only, the only benefit is that by doing that, the village. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, so the advantage for village, villages is that they can rent the hall at a reduced rate. Uh, the reduced rate is one thirty-two versus four twenty-two for, for a non-citizen. Our contribution last year was twenty-one sixty-seven. Fifteen people from the village used it. So that means that on top of what they paid, the village is paying a hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents per person that uses it. If it was more, if it was utilized by more people, I think would make more sense. But very few people are getting that benefit.
Do you know if we have a contract?
We don't.
Unfortunately, it's just. And all of, all of the revenue stays with the town. They, you know, there's no revenue sharing. So, uh, as an example, town residents, uh, last year, four people rented it. You know, we don't have any investment and we don't have any ownership like they have, but.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, um, so we're, we'll continue to move through the memos and, and ask, ask questions and you can even make a motion at any time during the meeting, technically. The elections and e-poll books, we'll still go over that. We'll try to remind you also where that's located in the actual budget. So this, this item would be on page seven of the budget document. But it should be at the front of your memo packet.
Um, nothing has changed since the Finance and Personnel meeting, um, requesting, um, to purchase the e-poll books, which we've talked about before, they've been tested, they're implemented and up and running, um, in Wisconsin. Um, the cost is forty-eight hundred, which would give us four units. And then the other portion of this is to purchase an express vote, which would, um, replace our auto mark, which is our Ava machine, um, for handicap accessibility. Um, the life is long, it's seated, it's due. Um, it is being phased out and so, um, the Dane County clerk has asked that we put this into our budget, um, to support, um, getting the new express vote. An express vote would give us the capability of using it for absentee voting as well. So it's a more universal piece of election equipment, um, that I think we could get more use out of than just on election day. Um, plus this will also extend the life of our polling, one polling location.
Any questions on it?
The poll workers were very excited about, um, that, that they have another machine, um, that we bought this year for them, for all of us to vote. And the, the anticipation of having new equipment is there.
Yeah, they're, they're, um, open to the e-poll books. They're anxious for them, so, which is a good thing.
Do you know what the expected lifespan of the equipment would be? Is this gonna, someone's gonna last us twenty years? Is it gonna last us thirty years?
Well, it's based on technology and of course, as, you know, things move along. I would think that the express vote, um, probably, they, they, I don't know, you know, specifically what they have, but I would say at least ten, fifteen years, um, for sure. The poll books, um, basically are going to be a kiosk of, um, kind of a tablet layout. In the program, the hardware of it is being, um, maintained and written by the Wisconsin Election Commission. So, uh, you know, as long as they have the capability of keeping up with what, how they program it, it should be quite some time that they, they will be in service and, and use.
I just didn't wanna get something that in three years, it's, you know, gonna go away and, you know, how long have we been using what we've been using now?
Um, the DS two hundred, you've had.
About two years before you started.
Yeah, so fourteen, I think you implemented that. And prior to that, you had, um.
The Eagle and that we had for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Two years before that.
Yeah.
The, the handicap machine we've had that we currently use, twenty-five years?
Probably.
And it's beast.
It's very difficult to get, um, election equipment tested because it has to go through the federal level, then it goes to the state. So it doesn't change as quickly as like laptops, what you use in your own private world, um, because of the testing. So it's, it doesn't change that often. I mean, we may get upgrades in like the firmware, the hardware of certain things, but that's not going to change per se the, the equipment.
Okay.
Um, because it is, it's pretty grueling what they go through.
Yeah, I just don't wanna get something that's more experimental, that it's not proven and that it's gonna be, you know, tired in a couple of years.
No, I don't anticipate that happening.
Do you know what other communities have the express vote?
Oh, gosh, there are so many. I mean, there's probably, it would be easier probably to answer who doesn't than who does. Um, Deb actually just, uh, voted on the express vote on Saturday in, um, the city of Sun Prairie.
At the library.
Yeah. Um, and that's, you know, a lot more versatile piece of equipment than what the auto mark is right now. We could never use that for absentee voting or, um, it, it just would not work. Um, so, yeah, there, a lot of, um, communities are going, plus Scott is really supporting it because the auto mark is on its last leg.
Yeah.
We, we tested it this morning and thankfully it tested perfect this time. Um, last time, like I told you before, I had, I had a problem. We had to, um, get a different memory card for it, so.
Good. Yeah, in a couple of years, I think Scott had said that he wanted a hall of Dane County to be, um, express vote.
Express vote, yeah. Yep.
Can I, please, uh, John?
Hi.
What about security? Is, I'm assuming that the, going this route with e-poll books helps improve the security at election?
Sure. Um, so it's not, it's not hooked up to the internet like a lot of people will think. It's a standalone program. Um, they will be networked between them so that they can communicate. Um, we'll have four poll books, so they'll all know, um, which number we're on. But as far as security, um, they're very secure because, like I said, they're not hooked up. Plus, um, we have protocol now, um, that they're just implementing, uh, that we have to have, um, multi-identification when we log into WISVOTE, which, um, e-poll books would be tied to WISVOTE, which is our electronic, um, voting system. So the security is very good.
And do we have a backup? In other words, if it goes down, do we have paper or how do, how do we do that?
Right, so that would be our backup. It would be going back to the old, um, paper poll books if they would go down. But there again, it's a standalone program. It would be tested prior to, um, use. But if we would have anything as far as emergency of, you know, power outage, we have a plan in place for that. So it would, it would have to be pretty catastrophic for it to fail.
The WIS, uh, the express, um, vote is just like the poll book. It's not the actual voting machine, right? You still have paper ballots.
Right, you still have paper ballots. The, um, Badger Book is just an electronic poll book. And so instead of having the paper book that they, um, filed through to find you, you go to any station and you state your name and it's automatically put in. You can do a lot more with it than that. You can register to vote on the, uh, Badger, um, books. And you can also, I think at one point you'll build a request and absentee, but we're not that far, but, um, that's basically what it is.
All right, we can move along. The, um, next memo is the, uh, village revaluation. And Deb just passed around the, um, updated budget cover sheet with the, um, new assessed value that we got today. And I, I think, I, I was out of the room when the meeting was just starting, but, um, Associated Appraisal will be able to come for the first meeting in November, um, to present. But Deb can go over, um, some other updates that she has.
Yeah, so the total village-wide revaluation, um, we've had in the budget for five years probably now. And for several reasons, it's important to have a revaluation. I mean, it's, it's good to have equities between each class. It's good to have fair and equitable payment amongst, um, all residential and all commercial properties. Um, and doing an actual total revaluation is good in the sense that it catches those that maybe took out building increments or maybe did remodels or improvements without taking out buildings. And then also ultimately, um, if you go out of compliance, the state will step in, county will step in and, um, force a revaluation on you. So, um, on average, most communities do a revaluation every five years. Ours has been now eleven years since one has done, been done. There's three options that Associated Appraisal has, has given us to consider. One is a total revaluation and that is the most expensive, um, obviously. But it is a lot of manpower because they come out and they actually visit every property in the village. And that, they've given us an estimate of one hundred and ten thousand to do that, which is the maintenance along with the revale. There's also, they also gave us the option of doing, um, a total revale, but splitting it between two years, meaning starting the process in nineteen, twenty nineteen and then finishing it in twenty twenty. But your valuations wouldn't actually take place until twenty twenty. And then another option they gave us was to do just an exterior only revaluation, which is outside of properties, um, not inside, just as it states. That is eighty-six thousand. And the risk there is, uh, between that and doing a complete revaluation is that if somebody did, again, did a improvements or remodel on the inside, you would never, and didn't take out a permit, you wouldn't catch it. out a permit, you wouldn't catch it. Then the other option is doing an interim market update, which is what I had put in as a suggestion in the budget prior to the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. This is at a cost of $48,000. What they do with an interim market update is they don't actually go out and physically inspect and take pictures of every property. It's based on arms-length sales and market data, and they put it through their model that they have, that they work with on a consistent basis and brings everybody to 100% assessment, between classes also. That is what I had recommended going forward with. At the time of the Finance and Personnel meeting, we didn't have our total assessment value, wasn't available, actually just was posted out today. And our total assessment came in at $667 million. This gives us an assessment ratio of 89.4063, which puts us out of compliance, which means in January, we will get an out-of-compliance letter, which, what that means is that starts the clock ticking. We have then five years to do a total revaluation. If we don't do one in those five years, the county will step in and they will do it for you. And it's quite costly, costly at that point, even more so. And I've heard kind of horror stories about it. So I would really like to not be in that position.
Deb, this is John, quick.
Yep.
The value that we got, 89. whatever...
Yes.
Today, does that include a reevaluation or an assessment of the business in the community? Because I always thought that occurred a bit later in the cycle.
It actually was manufacturing, I think, is what you're talking about, and yes, it includes that. Manufacturing is assessed by the state, not by the municipality or whoever the municipality hires. And that generally does come in later, however, that it does include this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question about just assessed value, just so I understand this. Looks like in the last year, assessed value went up $2 million. Or no, 12, I guess it's $12 million, sorry. So that's how much property was added, like built, within that year. Is that correct? Or how does assessed value go up when we're not reassessing?
Yes, it's new construction.
Just new, that 12 million is new construction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's commercial and residential?
Yes.
Okay. But we don't get a breakdown of the difference differential? I mean, are we way behind on one or the other, commercial versus residential?
We do. I don't, that is not available or it wasn't available today, but we will get one.
Okay. I'd be interested in just knowing, you know, if it's 90% for residential, but it's 75% for commercial, if we're way behind on commercial, that would influence me.
Sure.
Any other questions on the revaluation? So, I mean, we're officially, like Deb said, out of compliance now at this point.
Do businesses or developers care about whether we haven't had a revaluation in 11 years? Is that a factor?
I don't know. I've never heard that talked about.
I mean, developers, I can't imagine that they, it would affect them that much. I mean, unless they're building a house and they're trying to sell it, but even then, it would be based kind of on what the market's doing. I don't really have an answer to that, but I haven't heard any complaints though.
I mean, I would think if a development was in progress and then we did a revaluation and suddenly his price point of all his houses, they're going to probably go up to compensate for that.
I mean, that shouldn't change. I mean, whatever's being built is the value that's been...
Okay.
It's more of homes that are, that were built before the last revaluation.
When they're doing that reassessment of the property, does it, because we're at 667 now, 670 million now, they're saying the equalized value is 748, but they're going to assess each property, right? Do they, so that it's possible it could be higher or lower than that 748?
The goal is to get the assessed value to the equalized value. That's when you get 100%.
Exactly. So they back into the number somehow?
So some properties are paying too much in tax.
Right.
Some properties are not paying enough in tax.
Uh-huh.
So as they equal that up, along with commercial properties, and make everything equal and fair and just...
Okay. Because they come up with that house and say, "Your house is worth $400,000," but then they're going to back into it after they come up with a whole big number? They'll shave a couple of percentages off of everybody or to make it right? How do they do that?
No, it would be, I mean, every home is going to be looked at as far as what the market is doing, what the sales, what comparable houses, as far as bedrooms, square footage, upgrades, et cetera.
So they come up with a number?
Mm-hmm.
And then how do they make sure that all those numbers match up to 746? I'm just curious.
I don't know the exact formula, but I'm sure, you know...
That's what we're hoping, that they can compensate.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
No, that's what hurts on that. No, that's okay, but I...
Got it.
Yeah, if you could table some of those questions, we'll do, they can, they'll be here and just answer those.
I know, and I brought this up at the committee meeting, but this is my third budget session that I've gone through. The last two years, we've been told that our assessment ratio will be under what it's supposed to be in the last two years. We've still been above that asset ratio, so I'm not necessarily believing that we're going to be under this year either.
Those were guesses at a, like...
Yeah, I understand they're guesses, but it's hard to make a guess out of a guess.
But this one is not a guess, that's what I'm saying. I got those numbers today, these are our numbers. This comes from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, and it says right on our assessment report that came out today, that our assessment ratio is .89406273. So we're out of compliance officially.
Those are the estimates that has, you know, been at the Finance Committee and then probably at this workshop, and we haven't gotten that statement until, you know, a week or two later than this, or I don't know the timing of other work with other workshops. But anyway, those were just estimates.
Do you know, as we have more development in the village, is that going to affect the asset?
The ratio?
Yeah.
As we get more development, your equalized value will go up and Associated Appraisal assess new homes also. I mean, that's, they do that, that's included in the maintenance, so any remodels and new construction. So they should come in at 100%. So...
Where does the equalized value come from again?
The state.
The state. They come, they make that, they create that number?
Yes.
All right. Interesting.
I just, John, just a couple of quick questions, comments. So right now, the reassessment in the current draft of the budget is not included, correct?
Correct.
So if the board felt because we appear now to be slightly under the ratio that we need to include this, I would make two recommendations. One, that this assessment go out for bid, because this is a lot of money for taxpayers and we have an end of one right now, our current assessor. And two, then we certainly have to go back to the budget and do a serious look-through to find something to pull out to, I think, slot this in, because I think the goal, when we started all this, I think it was trying to get as close as possible to a zero-sum gain for tax-based assistance.
John, the proposal was to pay for it in cash, so it's not in the tax levy? The proposal, it's not in the budget period right now, but if it were to be in the budget, at least my proposal was to spend it in cash as a one-time expense.
Okay. Still, it's a lot of money, and I would still go by my second comment about going out for bid, something like this. Again, we've had the assessor, current assessor for a while, but you know, you always have to do that, let this test for anybody, particularly when you're spending nearly $100,000.
What, that, this is Deb. And yes, I hear what you're saying. My only comment to that is that what I have in the budget is the interim market update, which is actually $33,500, not a full revaluation, which was $95,000. The reason why Associated Appraisal can do an interim market update is because they have been our assessor for many years and they know the cycles of the village and are confident in the numbers that they have, that they can do this through the model of in-house.
Okay, sorry. That makes sense, then, maybe not to go out for bid, because if, if no other assessor can touch that, I would think...
Right. If we were doing a full revaluation at $95,000, then yes, absolutely, I would say go out for RFPs. This is just a little different situation.
Will they still handle appeals and is that included in the charge, that we're getting charged?
They're at the open book section.
That's part of the maintenance, right?
So the proposal, Matt, was to pay the interim market update out of cash?
The $33,000.
$33,000. And that would put us back, sort of, on an even keel then?
To me, that's just a wild guess, an educated wild guess. You do it right?
It is. I mean, I remember back in 2007, I got a letter on a Friday, and I was still in the military. I was at Fort Mobile Weekend, and they said, "If you want to contest this, come in on Monday." So didn't have my homework done, didn't have time, came in. They had what they thought was comparable, and they basically say, "I don't agree with you," and they'll come back and say, "What do you think it's worth?" And I gave a number, and four weeks later, they said, "You're approved for the number I gave." So it is a guess. It helps to come in with your facts, but they're also very, I think, open to the homeowners as well, or the business owners, if that's the case.
Yeah, the last time we assessed, I came in, appealed, and they lowered it by 75 grand because they...
Right. I came back with actual homes that sold in the neighborhood.
Yep.
So I'm not sure how educated their guess really is.
I'm with you.
They don't live here, they, you know, and if we're going to spend for full evaluation at some point in the future, I mean, again, we should do our due diligence and make sure we get more than one bid on the cost of that.
Any other questions?
So other municipalities do, like, a section, I hear, or...
Well, it's all over the board. Larger municipalities have their own in-house assessors, but they, you know, they also use outside consultants when they do a revaluation. Some do, some don't, depends on how big their staff is. Yes. Well, I don't really know how all of them do it. I know in Sun Prairie, they do a revaluation every two years. They also have some in-house assessors, so then their costs will be already fixed, as far as that goes. But there's a lot of growth in Sun Prairie. If it was a municipality that doesn't have near as much growth, then they could hold off, I'm sure, a lot longer. But once you get to a point, and like, that's kind of my goal, or would be my next step, is that if, you know, once we got the total revaluation done, to schedule at least a section, if you break it up in halves or quarters or whatever, and do that on a periodic basis, so that you're not, number one, hitting the whole village at one time, the cost would be less, the impact would be less, but yet you can still keep yourself on more even keel.
And if Associated was here tonight, they'd be able to answer more questions.
Yes.
So I don't know how we can really make a decision without being able to ask them these questions.
How long has Associated been, or is...
He's been here.
Before I started. So it's been at least 11 years. And I think they've been here quite a while. They've been here back to the day when it was written on cards. And we did, last year, I did send out RFPs for a revaluation, and Associated Appraisal did come in the bullets.
Do you know, well, they do other communities too?
Yes, they do.
And ultimately, if it's approved with cash, it doesn't even have to technically be part of this budget, it could be approved, whatever. So it could totally be delayed for future needs or whatever. But certainly, I think, they should be here to answer the questions. The next memo is the phone system, interconnectivity. It can be found on page 90, where it's in the budget, and Deb has this one.
So if you remember last year, we put in the budget and had installed equipment here, the stack water tower and the new water tower, North Water Tower, to allow interconnectivity, wireless interconnectivity between all the municipal buildings, and also works with internet connection for all three. So we're currently using, it's called UpNet, Wisconsin, and between them and Charter, we have backup system and use system between the two. I'd like to take that interconnectivity a step further and put our phones here on voice over IP. They currently have that down in Municipal Services Building, but this would allow this building to connect to the Municipal Services Building, where we can transfer calls, in and out of service, if who's available, not available, to, in order to transfer calls when customers call. The current phone system we have here is very aged and does not have the capability. So with that, and I got some equipment quotes from Computer Magic, I have $9600 in the budget for that.
Any questions on the interconnectivity?
Deb, do we own, like, certain extensions? If that makes sense, like the last war after 839, where, like, say, we moved Cynthia up to Public Works? I mean, are we able to build in those numbers into the current system?
Extensions?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, they won't have a direct line. Nobody has a direct line, but there's extensions that can be attached.
So right now, if people call Village Hall, then you just have to give them the number to Public Works or something? So this is to, so you can just transfer them over?
Right.
And it can be vice versa too?
Yes.
So it's just between those two or...
Right now, we don't have any other buildings that have phones.
Any other questions on the same?
Next, Jay Joe talked about total for additional seasonal staff. Public Works budget starts on page 16.
Briefly, we've got myself and six field staff, and so... Briefly, we've got myself and six field staff, and so any project that requires more than one body takes some of our skilled, experienced technicians, and a lot of times, you need one skilled equipment operator, a body to work the shovel. So, that's pretty much it, really. Just like to have some bodies get, most likely, I'm thinking, high school or college summer help, get some things done where we just need some labor in the summer months.
Any questions on that?
Are you asking for three or two?
I believe that number was the three.
And you feel confident that you can keep the three bodies gainfully employed throughout seasonal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the only reason why I'm asking is, would it make more sense to start with two? Because right now, you don't have any, and then move up to three if you find that there's plenty of work?
I, I think I could probably take a dozen, but, whatever, I mean, any one body, you know, so.
Would that decrease overtime then, for the full time?
Not for this, they're not gonna be doing the kind of things that are responding to emergencies, so I think that's, that's our overtime stuff. We don't typically have a project that goes into overtime if we're working on something, we wrap it up and secure it for the day and go. So anything that's overtime is either snow plowing or another utility emergency. So, no.
You said in your memo about this would help you be a little bit more cost-effective with your, your staff?
Yep.
Can you kind of explain whether or not out shoveling and doing stuff that they could be doing?
Basically, when you've got somebody that's got fifteen-plus years of equipment and experience, you just basically have two things going on with, as long as we've got some seasonal staff, where, you know, without, you have one weather hits, this, this summer, we cleaned out a couple of really big storm outfall areas. You do want one person there that can operate either the Macko, the payload, or the Bobcat safely, and knows, you know, what the goal is of the job, but then, basically, you just need somebody that's gonna shovel out the rocks, shovel out the slugs, and, you know, rake dirt. And basically, where this summer, we had a few of those go on at different times with, a lot of times, we had three of our guys there, that could have been going on simultaneously with two of our experienced people, even pieces of equipment and some bodies, to basically even labor.
The next item, JJ will go over, is shifting utility clerk duties and eventually the billing over to the Municipal Services Building from Village Hall. The proposal is to do this mid-year to allow for transition, and the cost of the budget is actually on the, it's on the village clerk side of things, because we'd be hiring a full-time administrative assistant here to replace Cynthia. The benefits of Public Works and Parks and Rec would be, right now, they, both of those departments share a half-time secretary. This would give them another full-time person there, or not another, one full-time person, but you can continue to explain that.
And essentially, this request is coming a year ahead of schedule. As most of you, I think, were around, were going through Public Service Commission approval of the AMI system, or maybe not, actually, we've gone on a few years. But anyway, we now have all of the meters installed, one full year ahead of anticipated schedule. So, as soon as we get the infrastructure installed on the water tower and the software loaded up, they basically won't have to drive around and read the water meters, they'll bounce to the tower and write to the computer. Freeze up our guys that have been doing meter reads and these meter installs for the past few years, but it's gonna put a bigger burden on our utility clerk if we wanna see all the benefits of this system, like, the biggest one is, is probably, depending on timing and how it would actually be implemented, but conversion to monthly billing. So basically, residents get a monthly bill versus quarterly, they're all automated, but that does just mean more time for the utility clerk. And there are just, there are almost a limitless list of things that this infrastructure can do, depending on what the residents want to see. People can monitor their usage, you can get alarms where you can identify somebody's got their toilet leaking, and, you know, you can send them notifications. But basically, that can all be done from one computer, but that's all one person, and with the duty she has here at Village Hall, you can even attempt to add, finish that stuff to her, her job now. So, while the meters and the AMI system are great for field staff, it's gonna put a bigger burden on the utility clerk position if we really wanna utilize all the bells and whistles that we're capable of. And again, they got it done, they got it done too fast.
And the monthly billing aspect has to be researched more?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if, if it's something we want, that's something we could pull folks, pull coal, or, but I, I do know, it's pretty pop, it's very popular with your, your auditors, just because money comes into the utility faster, you have, in other communities that have it, you do, you see less non-payments, less late payments. And I know for us personally, when it changed in, in Madison, it was nicer to just get a smaller bill more on than a larger one. But, yep, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
So you have this as the financial impact. Is it in the Public Works part, or is it in a different section?
Does that mean the clerk does?
Cynthia, yes. So currently, Cynthia is split between water and sewer and the general fund. She'll move to being split fifty-fifty water and sewer. Then we have to hire a body here that will be all general fund. So it's, the financial impact is basically taking the general fund more.
But she keeps asking more specifically in the, is it all, is it under village clerk?
Uh, yes, yes.
What page?
Page seven.
I don't remember. Is that then how I have the person split up? But it hits clerk, and it hits some treasury. But that majority of it's clerk.
And it's just showing fifty percent for this next year, because the move up one July, correct?
Correct.
All right. JJ has another, another memo, is a proposal here, doing some research on reconfiguring, kind of realign, realigning how the department is put together, and just to know going in, ultimately, the finance committee, instead of making the positions hundred percent Public Works, JJ, or Sean will be talking about a parks position later, and ultimately, the finance committee decided to have that position be joint to start fifty-fifty. And that would also start halfway through the year. But I still want the staff to present what they were proposing initially.
So, ultimately, the only change from this from last year and the previous three years now, is the utility clerk position now. But basically, just based on our size, road mileage, and service provision, we're a very lean operation. I think the best way moving forward would be to basically split into utility and streets and add a former superintendent position that's focused more on the half of the responsibilities. The staff would all still work together, most likely, all would still remain water operators, everybody would plow, but there'd be a separation of duties and reporting responsibilities from a one-formal position to two. But like Matt said, there's a bit of a different direction for finance, so unless there's any specific questions about that request.
And that leads nicely to Sean's memo on the parks employee. So Sean was proposing a full-time parks employee, and this was kind of the recommendation to do a, a joint form between parks and public works.
Yeah, I was, just wanted, I spent about sixty to seventy percent of my time in the summer outside supervising our LTEs, our limited, our, just our seasonals. We have, we have three, three-season employees, so they work eleven-hundred hours, and then we have three to four five-hundred-hour college kids. When I initially wrote the memo, it was very clear to me as to, I was comparing our F, our LTEs to other communities' full-time employment, employees. So I wanted to, I went back and I broke it down and just kind of talked about making everybody FTEs. And we use seven communities, and they average, those seven communities average about eleven, just over eleven, full-time equivalents, where we average, where is that?
Three point seven.
Three point seven-five, excuse me, excuse me. And that equates to one employee to every twelve acres of parkland for other communities, and we, we are one employee to every twenty-two parkland, every twenty-two acres in parkland. So I just wanted to clear that up a little bit, because it was very clear to me that I can understand why it wasn't clear at finance, 'cause we weren't really comparing apples to apples. So, and this would be a position that, that, and I've said this a hundred times, JJ and I play well together, he, the Public Works guys spend between three and five hundred hours a year assisting parks maintenance, and so this would be a position that it would be just kind of a general all-around, JJ needs help, he gets a guy. Be, it would be a, a person that would plow in the winter and help out whichever way possible with snow removal. Much of the winter, if not removing snow, they would be doing, helping, assisting our forester and doing pruning and tree, tree, tree removal, excuse me, things like that. So it, it's just, it's, it's kind of a, a general position, but more focused on parks maintenance. And we also, in this proposal, I also talked about that we would eliminate one of our LTE seasonal, three-seasonal positions, so we'd eliminate that eleven-hundred hours, and that would be a sixteen, a little over sixteen and a half thousand dollar savings towards the overall financial impact of, overall cost of seventy-two, that would drop that down to fifty-five.
So why does it say ninety-nine on our budget memo?
Oh, so, sorry, I wasn't consistent with, with that, I noticed that too. So that, that would be at the highest range that would, that we possibly hire at for the entire year. So, worst-case scenario is that'll be, that number will be half for this year, so forty-nine thousand.
And, and that's if we did the combined parks, streets form.
Forty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Okay. Still, it seems, so it's, I guess, benefits are thrown in there, and that's just what's causing that to be so high?
It's, it's, it's.
Fully loaded, family rate.
It's a family plan.
Yeah, okay. And that, what does that cost, what does the benefit package cost, all in? You said that at one time, and I forgot it.
Could be, it could be.
Twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Any questions?
Was that number in that forty-nine?
Forty-nine thousand seven hundred.
You get twelve.
The next series of memos are capital fund-related. JJ has some equipment to talk about.
The projects one?
Yeah, sorry, additional, additional projects.
Uh, yep, the, basically, we had two, the road repaving begins an annual repaving project, separate from road maintenance, which is, you know, crack filling and seal coats or other maintenance treatments over roads. This would be starting to actually, whether it's a two-inch mill and overlay or a complete pulverization of, of some of the roads that are, and right in that sweet spot, you can't really do any more maintenance, but they're not falling apart too bad just yet, and we will, basically, we've got a, a planned spreadsheet estimating costs of different sections, most likely go to Public Works and Properties for recommendations on street sections, I'll have recommendations, and then begin repaving to keep some of these roads in decent shape. And the other one is, we maintain a very comprehensive spreadsheet of recommended large maintenance and replacement schedules for our three, Municipal Services Building, body road in this building, and this starts capital expenditure annually to tackle some of those issues. Again, those can change from year to year, depending on, you know, something may be recommended for next year, but it's, it's still operating where something that was planned a couple of years from then is, you know, comes up earlier. But some examples would be upgrading the lighting in the old shop garage area, the gas sensors at the Municipal Services Building, add file access to the rear door of the Municipal Services Building, things like that. Yep, so any question on those items?
So is this on the?
Yes.
The big spreadsheet?
Yeah.
So it shows thirty-six thousand for village building maintenance, but only twenty-five thousand two hundred for general fund impact? Is that where I'm looking?
Yeah, the utilities will pay a portion of that, thirty-six thousand, yep.
But, but it's only the twenty-five-two on the general fund impact?
Correct. And then Chief Labor has a couple memos, the first one on detective vehicle.
Correct. Initially, I would, had asked for a detective vehicle because our two thousand and seven Ford Taurus has had it. It's got a hundred thousand miles on it, it's requiring maintenance, and it has a hole in the floorboard on the passenger side. It needs to be replaced, there's no doubt about that. So I originally suggested buying a decent used car and putting that in service. Finance Committee graciously suggested that we go new and make it a dual-purpose vehicle that could be used for surveillance, patrol if necessary, and therefore, you're getting a new vehicle and it will last much longer, have less maintenance. Also, by buying new, we can piggyback, piggyback on the state contract for special service vehicles, so we'll get twelve thousand dollars off that price. Normally, a Tahoe, twenty-nineteen Tahoe vehicle like that would cost upper forties, we're getting it for thirty-five, I think. So that's pretty good savings. I looked into getting another Ford Explorer Pursuit that we have right now, but frankly, all those look like top cars. So, I think we're better off going with a Tahoe, and it will be a dual-purpose vehicle for patrol and detective. It will require us buying another laptop for it, that's thirty-six hundred, and a few lights and a siren in there in case patrol's using it or detective needs to pull someone over, use it for that purpose. And we're trading in the Taurus, which I think they said they'd give us nine hundred bucks for, and almost ten thousand for the F-150 patrol truck, which is just sitting there right now, 'cause we're, we don't wanna drive it anymore because of the maintenance costs.
Do you replace the vehicle every year?
That was the plan. So initially, I requested to use twenty-nine cap, twenty-nineteen capital funds to get radios instead, and then I threw in the detective vehicle, because frankly, we can't get by with it anymore. We can, but we can't. We can, but we can't have it dying down at the public safety building and stuff like that. It's not good.
Now, part of the capital plan for next year is to get a new police, to get a new for next year for two thousand and twenty is to get a new police vehicle, is that correct?
So then we go back to the normal process again in two thousand and twenty.
So isn't there a reason why we couldn't wait a year and take the decals off the unit that you're taking out of the regular fleet and utilize one of the vehicles that's sitting there for two thousand and nineteen for the detective to use?
Yeah, we wouldn't be taking one of the Explorers out of service. We're actually going to get rid of the Taurus and the F-150 this, this coming year and then replacing it with the detective vehicle. So two thousand and twenty, we wouldn't be getting rid of any of our Explorers. But two thousand and fourteen is the oldest one we have and that's about fifty-six thousand miles on it. So we might be able to get another two years out of it, maybe.
Couldn't you use that as a detective vehicle?
Could, but again, it's not going to be suitable for surveillance work. Right now, if we need to do surveillance in the village, you either use your personal vehicle, which is a huge liability risk, or basically, you're going to have to find some other vehicle to do it with. You can't do it with the Taurus. It's, it's got antennas all over it. It's not reliable. It's not pursuit rated. It's just not suitable for that type of work. It's a car to get you from point A to point B and that's it.
So, so the, what are you looking at here? A Tahoe wouldn't have any antennas. It wouldn't be obvious as a police vehicle?
No, they're hidden by Belco, the outfitter. So Belco's an, is our outfitter, GenCom's an outfitter, and they, they hide whatever antennas are necessary. Back in two thousand and seven, when they did this Taurus, they didn't care what it looked like. They just wanted a detective vehicle. It was never used for surveillance and therefore, they didn't take any care in hiding any of the antennas that are on there.
So in two thousand and twenty, are you going to get a new vehicle?
We, we have a plan to replace vehicles every year. So we were substituting two thousand and nineteen, we were, that's the next memo. We were substituting radios for a car purchase. But then we were also asking to replace the detective vehicle in two thousand and nineteen also.
So we're doing the radios and the car in two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Radios at the top.
Right, right. The radios have to go.
Right.
If I had to pick between the two of them, we have to get rid of the radios. These Kenwoods are ten years old. They're all breaking down now and their effectiveness in buildings is terrible. Soon as I walk into a building, get ten feet in, my radio starts beeping, which means it's not working. And that's not good for us. It's not good for people. We're in their houses. We need to get information out. We can't do it. Any other questions on the?
When you buy a vehicle, like the new Tahoe, and you know, when you buy it as an individual, you get the manufacturer warranty. Does that's take, is that the same thing for when like a police outfit buys a fleet vehicle? Do you get that warranty still for the manufacturer?
Yeah, we get the same standard warranty that any customer would that's not a fleet purchase.
You don't have to worry about maintenance on it, maybe for three years or thirty-six thousand.
Right, yeah, or drivetrain hundred thousands.
I think a Chevy Cruiser looks less like a police vehicle than a Tahoe.
Well, there are state contracts for Chevy Sonics.
There you go.
I don't think our current detective would fit in a Chevy Sonic, so. But you have that something.
Paint one of the doors primer color?
Yeah. You do, you do need something that's built for police work.
I'm just.
Yeah, I'm just, there's, it's amazing the amount of things that a police vehicle has that a regular car does not have. Like this would have an extra battery, extra-large alternator, different brakes, different suspension, skid plates underneath so you can go over a curb without, you know, dragging your oil pan off. It has a different transmission in it, just all sorts of different things in there that are for police vehicles. So the next one was the original capital funds request and that was to, instead of purchasing a car in two thousand and nineteen, we would get the radios and if we had enough money left over, we would get two more body cameras because we have thirteen officers and only ten body cameras. I'm beginning to think that we may be spending all of our money on the radios though, but it's going to be close. The Motorola's that we're looking at are the state-of-the-art and they cost a little more than Kenwoods, but you get what you pay for. And the Kenwood, Kenwoods are not, I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but they're not as good as the Motorola's. And you pay for what you're going to get. You get better reception, you get better quality, you get better technology and you're, you're actually going to be able to transmit in a building and get out much better than the Kenwoods do. The Kenwoods we have right now, we bought with a grant and they spent accordingly for which money, whatever money they had in the grant, that's what they bought.
Are they supposed to last a long time since yours are ten years?
Right, the Motorola's are, they're much better quality and we'll also be utilizing radios that are compatible, better compatible with other agencies. And we can program, newer programs in there that the Kenwoods have no capability of doing whatsoever.
Do your current body cameras, they don't start on fire like once I heard about them?
I don't think so.
Not yet, anyway.
I haven't heard about that.
New York.
Axons?
New York, whatever they're using, yeah, they're, they're all catching fire.
Oh, that's a problem.
Yep, lowest bidder.
They do, we have had a couple of issues with our Exxon body cameras, but we send them in and they send us a brand-new one right away. They don't even bother fixing them.
And then Sean has two more memos on capital items. There's, the first one is renovating some recreation programs based in our municipal services buildings.
Yeah, we talked about this earlier in the year. Once we were able to start programming, the additional, I don't know what to call it other than the additional space. We're just looking to do, we talked about being a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars before this. With some bids and things like that, I've gotten that down to twenty-two thousand dollars. It's just redoing some electrical lighting, flooring for, fitness flooring and then really just kind of throwing a little paint on it to make it look presentable. We figure that we can, we should be generating at least an additional four to five thousand dollars a year in this, in this space. Right now, currently, we're, we have all of our adult fitness in the space that's right behind us and we've moved Cheer and Tumbling program to the additional space. And what that really allows is everybody to use their space pretty much every night of the week. Also in your memo, I kind of showed what our participation numbers are looking like and how, how they're increasing and, you know, the, it looks like the fall/winter really falls off. Well, we haven't got everybody registered and we're not offering all of those classes yet. And then also, just the last page of it is just, this is a calendar of what we're doing. And it's gotten really busy and it's really exciting and we got stuff going on every night of the week. So we'd like to, like to be able to renovate that space. We're really certain with the lighting, and I don't have the exact number on just the lighting part of it, but we're going to get about a six-year turnaround and that, the new lighting is going to pay for itself because it's going to be so energy efficient in comparison to what we have right now.
Questions?
And the second one was, if you remember, late last year, we did an ADA compliance survey on all of our parks and open spaces. And so we were asking to put ten to twelve thousand dollars a year into the capital plan to just kind of begin to knock off some of those projects. We just had finally, finally, finally got our playground installed at Fireman's Park. It is complete as of today. And one of the things that we did there was put in some port in place just to add some ADA accessibility to the playground. And what I'm looking at doing in, in two thousand and nineteen would be working on the Lion Shelter, doing some, making those bathrooms accessible and doing some other tweaks or whatever we can do with that money. And I'm just kind of slowly going down that list and addressing all of the things that we are not compliant with in all of our parks.
Of the, aside from the detective vehicle, these last six or so memos are items that were previously accounted for in the capital plan and were looked at during the financial management plan. With that, that covers all the significant requests of budgets. Are there any questions or other, or areas of the budget that you guys want to discuss further or make motions on?
Chief, if I can ask, Chief Labor, if I can ask, how many police vehicles do we have in total?
Five of the, the utility vehicles, Ford utility vehicles, including one that's assigned only to the K-9. We have the F-150, the O-9 Crown Vic, which is only the school resource officer back and forth to the school and training.
So is, is it a total of eight vehicles that we have?
Yeah, and then we'll be going, if this goes through, we'll be getting rid of two and we'll be adding one, so we'll be at seven. Which is not, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Some departments get by with more, some get by with less. We really shouldn't drop below seven because we have special events, parades, things like that, festivals, and you just can't, it does no good to double up officers in a car. You need them at an intersection or you need them at a scene. You just, you, and you can't borrow police cars from another agency, so. But we spread out the miles pretty well on the vehicles we use. We have four primary vehicles and they're all the Ford utilities.
On average, how many vehicles are out at one time?
During the day, there's usually only one or two extra in the garage. Second shift, two are out, third shift, three are out.
And then with a special event, is it common to have all of them gone?
Yes, every one of them.
Okay. And, and would the detective be, be doing detective work at one of those special events? I guess what I'm trying to get to is it seems like we've got enough vehicles that, to hold that person over until we get another vehicle, that we could kind of switch as detective vehicle. That it seems like we have enough that he could utilize that are truly a police vehicle, that are safe and everything else for him. The only unfortunate fact is they're all marked, correct?
Yeah, I don't, we really don't have a vehicle we could switch over to have the detective use. The only one we would have is the O-9 Crown Vic and that's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. And then we have the F-150, which we're trying not to use because that's also got a hundred thousand miles on it. So it seems to me that would probably fiscally not be the greatest idea because if we get rid of the, the Taurus, we're just replacing it with an as big or bigger problem. And we can't take one of our four primary vehicles out of service because many times we have vehicles in for service or off of training or whatever, but then you're short on emergency vehicles. And oftentimes when, like on day shift, when it's the lieutenant and I are there or second, early in the second shift, there sometimes I'm grabbing the last vehicle to go out on a call. So you really don't want to take one of your primary patrol vehicles out and put a detective in it.
All right. That's everything?
Yeah, so, you know, I'll have, all I had planned to cover is kind of the board's floor to make decisions, additions, subtractions.
Well, as far as the rebalance, I mean, obviously, we just talked about it without them here. I don't know, we can't really ask them questions and that could be something, like Matt said, doesn't have to be in the budget itself, right?
If it's, if the decision, if the board wants to do one and if it's, if the decision is to pay for that with cash, then no, it doesn't have to be technically part of the budget.
Okay. Any other questions then?
I said one question going back to Flynn Hall. That's not, removing our contributions is not going to affect any of the civic organizations, whether it's Lions, American Legion, Boy Scouts that currently meet there at.
That'll be up, that'll be up to the town, you know, if they want to.
And has that been asked to the town at all at this point or? I, I've mentioned to the town that there's been discussion.
What, there was some feedback?
No, it was neither negative nor positive. The clerk's hint.
Okay. So it's possible because right now Lions pay a third, Boy Scouts don't pay anything and I don't know who else uses it, Legion? Legion? I didn't know there was Legion out there, yeah.
Does anyone remember what, as far as the agreement, was there a term, was it a term to it? Was it a five-year?
I think Lee said it's, it just is at will. Every year, we could, we could opt out. That's what.
And they even mentioned it at the committee meeting, that anybody could get out at any time they wanted to.
Oh, yeah, that's right, right. The Flynn Hall committee meeting, that, that might be where it came up. Maybe it didn't come from Lee. Maybe it came from Chris.
There isn't like a notice period or something like that?
I don't believe so.
Okay, obviously, well, obviously, we'll check that.
Yeah. According to Chris, but who knows?
Yeah.
Probably should have talked to Ken.
Any thoughts on these proposals?
This is John. I'm just curious, we didn't talk about the park development fund projects. I'm excited to hear that. Or did I get it?
No, we didn't. We can. I, I didn't cover that, I guess, because it's not part of the tax levy. But, but yeah, certainly can circle back to that. The park development fund projects, Sean, if you want to touch base on, there's a North Lawn tennis court recoloring and then some design work for potential splash pad and potential body park shelter that were planned to be borrowed for in two thousand and twenty.
So I guess I would like to have these maybe put on as an agenda item in a future meeting since they're not part of the financial. We don't want to get bogged down. I have a number of questions about, for instance, for the splash pool going forward with the maintenance. I want to know what, you know, the staff level needs to be. So I'll host the questions for that one as well as the shelter. And any of these designs, if for whatever reason they didn't go forward, say in two thousand and twenty, we pushed it back because of the bike path or something else came up, are they still going to be prevalent and appropriate? Just to get a list of questions, so I don't think I want to necessarily block this session now because it doesn't really apply, but I definitely want to put that as, as future agenda items unless somebody else has, has it differently.
Did you guys discuss that in parks, in rec?
Discuss what?
The splash pad.
Yeah.
At your committee meeting?
Yeah.
Many times, yeah. We didn't, we didn't, we haven't approved this, the, I mean, this goes, this is the board issue, the money that will, right?
For engineering and borrowing? Yes.
But we did approve it, okay.
No, no, no.
Well, I mean, it's, it's in here because it's, it was approved in the financial management plan.
I understand.
That's why it's scheduled here, but it's just, you know.
So that's what John wants to discuss, is maybe have that as a future.
Yeah, it could be a, a separate item. It doesn't have to be part of the budget.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I should touch base on page two of my memo, the two thousand and nineteen borrowing. There are two portions to that. The largest portion is a reconstruction of BB from Sandpiper to Crawford. JJ, can you touch base on, on that?
That's, it's fairly straightforward. It's that bad stretch of College Grove Road there. You'll see a few of our big patches, one area of the contractor one, it's a little smoother, but a lot of cracks. So it's overdue. But in road construction speed, it's fairly small because we're not looking for bells and whistles. Repair any soft spot in the rock underneath and repave it, re-strengthen it, so.
And then the other portion was forty thousand dollars for the violation of the bike trail and creek crossing. And we're hoping for a fifty percent grant on it, on the total eighty thousand dollar project. And there's some future discussion with that to be forthcoming with the negotiations on the bridge with Humber. And the reason why it's a state trust fund loan, it's, it can be more expensive to go through a bond sale process and with a note of this size, it's, it doesn't quite meet the economy's scale to go through a full bond sale. So a state, state trust fund loan, we should get a great interest rate, probably in the high twos, so.
Got a question with the park development fund, so that's, money's funded via developers?
Yeah, for, yeah, it's residential development, they pay, they pay parts of fees and then if they don't provide a certain amount of land, a calculation and payment in lieu of.
So then I'm a little bit confused by those asterisk items would be reimbursed by proceeds from planned borrowing in 2020?
Yeah, so in the financial management plan, there, the hope would be to use those park development dollars in the future for more tangible, more tangible park projects. This is just a way to, you know, before borrowing, to have them float the money and be paid back and for it to stay off in the general fund, their books.
Got it, and then my other question, is it, is it, is it hard for me out at Bonham Park right now with restrooms and running water or are they just using portability?
Just the portability, okay.
Funny, funny guy.
I, I think one thing of note, the last Deer Grove EMS meeting, the budget was approved by the town of Cottage Grove, the village of Deerfield, we didn't take action on it, so at this point it's moot, whether we take action or not, it's been approved.
Any other questions, thoughts on, we heard?
The one question I had is on page five, when we talk about legal counsel. I was looking at that and it's, it looks like we budget annually for sixty thousand dollars. And twenty seventeen actual was seventy-nine grand, looks like this year we're coming closer to seventy-five thousand dollars. And I'm just curious, you know, what, do we need to adjust that or, I mean, are we sending, calling Lee between meetings? Are we using his services more or why, why is that increase and do we need to budget for that going into next year?
It's hard to know exactly what to budget for, it depends on many developer agreements and things we need them for. Some of it's pass-through, in other words, rebuilds the developer and.
That wouldn't be in here though.
Okay, that's the actual expenses.
This is actually, yeah, village.
Yeah, these are all village expenses. So if it was a developer agreement, we, I wouldn't say we get a hundred percent of those, you know, there's always, there's always some, some leg between getting an agreement to reimburse from the developer, but, so for the most part, those are, those are covered, but this would be, anything else that's not tid-related, developer-related, utility-related?
So our actuals though through September are only twenty-six thousand?
At least, at least a little slow on billing.
That's unusual. So in twenty seventeen, we were at seventy-nine thousand, since you were projected, seventy-five thousand, so I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, what, what, I think what could help would be, you could have many more agenda items. Have, have the board specifically give motions for specifics for him to work on. I think what, what happens is something that's on like a board meeting, he needs to come to the meeting prepared, so he's, you know, looking into those things. He hears a question during the meeting here and he needs to look something up and follow back at the next meeting. And if he doesn't hear from you guys, he doesn't want you to do that, that's what, you know. And he does get emails and phone calls from, from people on board. I've, you know, I've asked him to, and I don't think he puts a lot of time in if someone's contacting him individually. I, you know, hope that would stay in the fifteen to thirty-minute range, but I, you know, that adds up over time, so.
So John, your question is, do we think ahead and budget a little extra or do we just keep it at the seventy-five?
Well, right now we're budgeting for sixty and the last, well, last year was seventy-nine thousand. This year it's projected to be closer, about the same, seventy-five thousand, so.
Jeff, what page is it?
I'm on, I'm on page five.
Or we just give more specific rather than.
And that's what I was going to ask, I mean, I don't, certainly not in a position to prohibit anyone from contacting Lee throughout the month. I'm just curious how many trustees are actually emailing or calling him where maybe it's not presented to the board or a motion is made to direct his legal services.
I don't think he does things by a trustee that calls him, like it might just be more for questions. What, what I think is like he might be researching lots of different topics because we don't specifically tell him at a board meeting what to do.
And that's what I'm recommending is maybe we could be a little, like Matt said, be a little more specific during board meetings and if possible, hold the questions in direction to the board meetings so we can discuss and maybe consider.
I don't think any trustee can specifically tell him to do something.
No, but if they're calling and emailing in between meetings outside of maybe, you know, just legal questions, I don't know how often that's occurring.
There's been lots of occasions where Lee has called me and said, I got an email about this, how much time do I want to spend on it? And I said, just enough to get back to the trustee and bring it up at the next board meeting or something like that. Not to go into it in a lot of detail, so.
From a staff standpoint, we try to utilize them just twice upon, two, two staff meetings and then people just hold their questions and do it there.
I think last year, didn't you put something together for us, Deb, that showed us total build versus, you know, back to developers and that kind of thing?
I didn't.
Were you, I don't think you ran.
I wasn't on, but that was part of the first questions I had with, you know, reviewing the vouchers each month. And I think that's when they ended up putting the codes that used to be here, but, you know, what gets billed back to the developers versus what's, what's actual, you know, village funded.
Yeah.
And that, that helps.
It might be beneficial to do that for us all again if you could, Deb.
Sure.
And if anyone knows before, you know, something that they'd like the board to consider looking into, we can put it on agenda as an agenda item. And if it's an individual request, I, you know, I suppose that could even, you know, just for, if the board's okay with it, someone could put that under their report. Sounds like I'm getting another call, but I'll let it pass. But anyway, the board can certainly more formally, and I think we'd better to regulate that for the board to directly, specifically at meetings. Or have, have him come with a summary of the, you know, things he's currently working on and he can say, don't, don't do that, don't, don't work on that anymore, here's the things we want to focus on. That would be helpful, yeah.
So the agenda item is to discuss and consider the preliminary budget and also the public hearing date. As far as public hearing date, I think, Matt, you mentioned the nineteenth of November, if.
That was a suggestion that would, we'd be able to meet the notice requirements and that would also give the board, if need be, a chance to delay things one more meeting before final approval.
Okay.
I've seen it done both ways.
So approving the preliminary budget tonight would still keep it in the open for one more review then basically, if I understand that correctly. I mean, I, if you look at where we started out with the department committee heads and then how Matt carried it down and then what the finance committee did, I, I think we've done a good job.
I agree, and one last question is, so the finance committee recommended removal of the parks F T E. Like I said, I'd like to hear, I mean, I know, Sean, it sounds like you're out, you know, managing this, the seasonal help. I guess, I'd just like to hear some of the thoughts.
The thought, the thought, I just, it came from some of the citizen members of the committee. They thought that, well, there's a, there's emergency needs for public works that may take precedence over park. Their, their point was, are there many park emergencies? So the thought was, is that to have foremen that could float between, so that's, that's what came out in that meeting and it was.
Rather than bring two different people on, is, is we're one community and why, why can't we have one person that works both with parks and, and public works?
Okay, thanks for the clarify.
So I think in the summer, you know, and the way I saw it is in the summer, there, there are going to be more parks and in the, outside the summer months, I think probably more public works, which is probably what you had in mind to begin with, right?
And, and it seems like both departments work well together, I haven't seen them out in the parking lot duking it out lately or anything, but.
Take that out there.
But the point being is whatever needs to be done, they're addressing it, it's just how do they allocate the funds to this individual?
Did I get that right, do you think, do you have anything else to add? Just to, just to kind of, this is a generalization, but what we've talked about is in the winter, the employee will be more needed, the way this setup will work with J J for plowing purposes and things like that. It should help with reduction in overtime and then it benefits parks because most of the rest of the year is when that employee will be, you know, reporting to parks, so. Might cut down on some overtime, hopefully, maybe.
Any other questions on the budget that we have in front of us tonight with the current draft? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget and set the public hearing date for November nineteenth.
A second?
Okay.
Is that as proposed by the finance committee?
The finance committee version, right?
With, with updates from Deb on.
Tax.
There's a, Deb's memo on, dated for today.
Right, that didn't get included in what Deb passed out tonight, has to get incorporated in there?
It's incorporated into the budget, you see, I'm just saying it's not technically everything that finance committee.
Right.
Approved because they were just, you know, dental premiums update and, yeah, I guess that was really, really important.
Okay.
Oh, the court, court budget.
Right, municipal court. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
So because it's preliminary, then we can still revisit the rebel after November first or when they, or the next?
The rebel could really pay cash.
Anytime, if it's paying cash.
Because we don't have to put it down on the levy, it can be a separate agenda, not even with the budget.
And then same with Flynn Hall, once we do check with Lee, since we don't know about the contract for certain?
Oh, if the existence of the, if there is a contract, I mean, it would be good to know if there is.
Yeah, we'll look up to see if there's any notice or what.
Yeah.
The preliminary budget that's, that is published now between your actual hearing date, it can change, just not significant change. So Flynn Hall is minimal enough that it wouldn't really.
All right, we have a motion and a second, if there's any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is settled. Gotcha, okay, all right, motion passes.
We take that out before we go for post-session?
Yeah, we can take, I think we only need data here for the post-session, I hear it's Chief Labor, Sean. We can take five minutes back in here, twenty after, that's all right?
John, I'll call you back.
Pretty good battery life.
But I felt as though something.
That's important.
I thought the staff would work better in your face.
Yep, because there's going to be a lot of questions on it, especially with the order.
Hey Jeff, Saturday that I think we're going to be at the same time, you got it, I'm going down the river.
Oh, is he? Yeah, I'm thinking about it, I got, they sent me free tickets, so I'm thinking about it. Definitely would be the Saturday night for either. Still trying, we got one friend that's coming.
Haven't seen him, I heard it's a good show.
Demo guys.
I just want to make sure you've got share.
Yeah, I'm going to try to convince the people.
Yes.
Have you been to?
So you're getting a lot of early voting or?
No.
Oh wow, that's amazing.
Looks like a pretty cool setup.
Okay, yeah.
It's awesome, I don't know if these are.
Yeah, yeah.
It's amazing when they put it in a private hands versus trying to have the city figure it out.
What I like too is they have, makes it real easy, Frank Productions ticket office, it's for me, so anything that comes up.
You just go.
If you go there, like tickets go on sale at ten o'clock, go there, there's nobody standing there because they have no clue that they're taking.
A lot of people like, I mean, they'll pay the, the charge, it's astronomical, yeah.
Like Greta Fonte's gonna be June fourth, so I just went to Frank, now the, it makes sense. I just got a question on the, I probably remember we had twenty six seats with sheet, we had a spot for ten, so we turned in two of those.
Yeah.
Really want, so I got some really good seats, I had to pay for them.
Okay. Because you never know, somebody might be eligible or something.
That, or they may not be eligible, or they could be, if they sign two sets or three sets and both on the date, so.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, and they were selling online or whatever, I don't know where they, I think. Couple guys got them and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, right, it must become an old.
Okay, good to know, but you don't, that doesn't start until the summer, you can't gather. Okay, good, all right.
Right, no, it's crazy.
Have you been in there yet?
No, I got on their website. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I left the office at five thirty, there's no way I'm going to get there in time. And I want to, I wear all my clothes over there, it's my chain.
J J, who are you looking at to do the lighting over there on Bonnie Road?
I was going to reach out first to E P L again, right, two doors down.
Yep, I got to know Rod over the last probably six months. It's phenomenal, what they do.
And they even just initially, you know, both of them got, they've gone above and beyond, I have to say, this is all really preliminary, they put a lot of work into it and they're, they're giving us payback estimates.
Yep. Yeah, I'm looking to partner with him actually on some opportunities and he's like super smart but so down to earth.
Yeah. Yeah, he's giving like tours of the, and they know their stuff so well that they, they don't, they explain to me, make the government out for me and then they can say, all right, this means.
Right, yeah.
Relatively simple, this is just your goals and this will pay back in four years.
Yep. Yeah, nobody knew that existed, I mean, because I walked by there with the dog and I'm just like, what is this, EPL? And then, no, Paula, and she's just like, oh, you should get to know Rod based on the business model. So, I think we're working on some projects together moving forward.
Well, they've done big, big projects.
They've done military installations too, and that's where I'm gonna help them, I'll be in veteran business own, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to actually throw some business away because they, they've created already.
Yep.
Yes.
Only match where we're at, there, there, there's no doubt. It won't get off my mind when something goes up. But it's already happening out at the...
Great Wolf, whatever it is. Yeah, it's Bavarian in here.
No. It's okay, I tried to buy that building. It's the same one you guys, so. Can't really...
Um, so, sometimes, either it's a staff, a staff person or the department head, or both.
Do we need to go into close session or...
Oh.
Yeah, we should probably.
Are, are we...
We're not...
And yes, I...
We need to let them. Do they know?
I guess just have Lisa.
Well, hopefully we wouldn't feel bad.
You gotta let it shut off.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's shut off.
We'll just be shut off, like, it was like hot second.
That's okay.
Motion to go to close session?
Yep.